Welcome to Thinking Green. This is our last live show before Election Day next Tuesday. And tonight's show is going to be devoted to Board of Education issues. So I'm joined tonight by Myrna Martinez, who is our Green Party incumbent on the Board of Education, who is running for reelection. And we are going to be joined mid-show by also incumbent Board of Ed member, Rob Funk, because we anticipate that there will be questions from callers about the finances of providing public education and New London's plan. And we're hoping that Rob can shed some more light on that than probably any of the other candidates. So welcome, Myrna.
Thank you, Rana.
I guess what I wanted to do was to ask questions related to some of the issues that came up at the forum last week. It was a pretty good forum, and I thought that the candidates did have a chance to delve into the subjects pretty well, but not altogether well. And I think I'm going to start at one that I thought people really didn't get a very good idea about, and that was this MOU.
The MOU with the SROs?
Yes.
With Resource Officers.
And I know when there was a council debate the week before, a lot of the people in the audience had no idea what MOU was or SRO was. So maybe you can explain what it is and what the status is and why this is important.
Okay, yeah, there was some confusion about the MOU. So let's see, I'm wondering where to start here. So --
I don't know who it is.
Yeah, well, there's a coach back there. I think I'm going to go all the way back to, I'm going to go back to January of 2014, wherein the Department of Education and Department of Justice put out a statement and guidelines, or statement that there is huge discrimination all around the country with regards to discipline, that there is discriminatory discipline. So in other words, that discipline was being given in lines of racial, there was racial discrimination. And it's just a finding that they had, that it happened, you know, throughout the country, and obviously not in line with law. And so therefore, they set out this guideline, which I actually had with me, because I like talking about this stuff, but I left it. But the guidelines were ideas, many different ways that schools or districts can implement, different ideas for districts to implement in order to help reduce that discriminatory discipline, to help have it be a little bit more even amongst our different demographics. And so this has been somewhat of a hot topic, discriminatory discipline, the term "school-to-prison pipeline," let's say, you know, the whole idea that when we suspend kids, and obviously we don't want to be doing it more than one group or another, but it's not positive for anyone, that when we suspend kids, that they are more likely to end up in prison, that they are less likely to graduate. And I mean, the likelihood, you'd be really surprised, I don't actually have the numbers, but the likelihood is, I mean, it's, what's it called?
Well, it's like the correlation between even a single suspension, I think, and lack of high school graduation is pretty significant.
Definitely, definitely. I think it might be like, single suspension, 50%, you know, less chance of graduating. I don't really know, don't quote me on that. But anyway, so all of this has become a big topic that different groups around the country have been working on. You know, one of the publications by, I was just looking at this.
The Connecticut Voices for Children.
The Connecticut Voices for Children, yes.
Which does a lot of research related to children and families.
Sure. So consequently, legislatively, you know, there's going to be a reaction here. Legislators are going to be hearing from the public, from these groups, about what it is that we need to change. So this past year, this past legislative session, an act requiring school districts and SROs to have an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, when they contract or have a school resource officer in their schools is something, it's a new act. And this is what people were referring to, or what the questions were referring to, which we didn't, in the allotted time, whether the, you know, three minutes or the 30-second rebuttals, just there wasn't time to go into all of this. And so just a little piece of it, Section 1 of this Act Concerning Collaboration Between Boards of Education and School Resource Officers and the Collection and Reporting of Data on School-Based Arrests. So this is where it speaks of the memorandum of understanding that we're required to have, and it also, as the title says, about reporting of data on school-based arrests, because it is about reducing numbers in certain demographics, and as a whole, in our suspensions, looking for alternatives other than suspensions, but actually teaching how to deal with those situations, you know?
Now, when we look at our public education system, the idea of having police officers in the schools is relatively recent. I mean, I went to school in a big city, there were no police officers in the school. I don't know if there were any police officers in your school.
No, there were not in my school either.
But I think it started after the Columbine shooting, perhaps, as a response to the possibility of disaster.
Sure.
But I think what they found is that that isn't exactly what the police are doing once they're in the school.
Sure. So you're absolutely right. So after Columbine, the idea of zero tolerance in schools, that we're not going to tolerate any sort of violence, and that we're going to immediately remove students, that we're going to suspend them, move them out of the situation, so that, you know, under good intention, so that we're not, so that we are creating a safe environment, you know? The problem being that, you know, with anything, I think we need some balance, and we went too far, and suspensions have been out of control. And I'm not talking about New London, I'm talking about, you know, across the country. And we've found the harm behind that, you know, how, like I said, less chance of graduating, more students being fed into school-to-prison pipeline. And so this act here, Public Act Number 15-168, basically, it talks about this MOUs regarding the role and responsibility of such school resource officer, sorry, sorry, sorry. But it's about the school resource officers or the police department, and addressing daily interactions between students and school personnel with the resource officer. And if we think about this, an officer works with regard to the law, you know, but a school institution is about the development, the education of children, which isn't the expertise of an officer. So it does make sense to, oh, this also talks about a graduated response model is part of what should be implemented. And a graduated response model is the opposite of zero tolerance. It's saying, instead of zero tolerance, you've done something, you're out, a graduated response, well, what are the steps in order to make sure that we're teaching you an alternative, that we're taking steps, you know, we're graduating?
So if a couple of kids are having a fight in the hallway, they shouldn't be arrested for it?
Exactly. Let's look at the situation, let's, you know, we want to make sure that we're not putting other people in danger, but part of not putting other people in danger is also teaching the skills for dealing with conflict. And so that's what this MOU that they want to see is about. It's about making sure that this educational institution and this, I don't know anything about police officers, but regarding the law, this law enforcement agency, is we're collaborating and making sure that we take into account the development, the education part of it, who it is that we're dealing with, because law enforcement should be, it's dealing normally with adults. And so what are the consequences? Behavior is going to obviously look different for young people, and so what do we do in these instances? It's not the same thing if you're, you know, I mean, this would probably be an interesting discussion if we had an officer, but you know, it's not the same if a three-year-old kicks you.
Right.
It's a tantrum, you know, it could be a tantrum, versus if an adult does, which is assault, you know? And so how do officers, how do those in charge of law enforcement understand and deal with those situations in a school environment?
And one thing that struck me during the debate last week, and also it came up in the City Council debate, not just the Board of Ed one, that there was a lack of understanding that this is the law.
Yes.
And some people were saying, oh, I don't think we need it. Well, we do need it, because the state has told us we need it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And the second piece of it is that I think it's always good when rules are clear. You know, I think ultimately, it's helpful, not just to the students, not just to the school, but also to the school resource officers, if they know exactly what the expectations are and when they will be brought in. You know, there may be some, a few instances in the school where it is appropriate for law enforcement to step in, but that's really a very teeny minority of the events that happen in the school that are disruptions.
You know, just, I want to say one more thing, just to amplify the, you know, I started talking about the findings of the DOE and DOJ, and the repercussions, or the organizations and the groups acknowledging and wanting to help rectify the discriminatory discipline. Another of the bills, so now, you know, act that passed this past legislative session was about prohibiting suspensions for kindergarten through second graders. So it really is a topic that people are becoming aware of, and you know, and therefore, we need to, we are aware of, need to react in these, with these, in these areas.
And do things that are developmentally appropriate.
That's right.
So that our students can learn and do what they need to. Outdoors is really one of them. I guess I want to generalize a little from there to the whole issue of equity and diversity in our schools. That is something else that came up in both of the, all of the forums, I think, that we have a very diverse city.
Sure.
And we need to be thinking about these issues, but I have to say, a lot of the candidates did not seem to have a clear path, how we can, you know, what we should be doing.
Yeah. So there were a couple of questions that had to do with diversity and addressing the city that we do live in, and acknowledgement of different groups, and I have to say, it is a tough, it is a tough question, something, I mean, depending on how it's posed, the way that it's posed, you know, what do you do with these different, how do you address, how do you, how do you reach out to these different groups? That's a tough, that's a tough question, because what does it mean to be a part of one of these groups? Like, what's that, what are those blanket statements, you know, of like, I am Hispanic, and so therefore, do I fall neatly in this, in this group right here, you know? But along these lines, this past year, or this, in this term, on the Board of Education, I've pushed and seen through, I've introduced to the Board, to the system, an equity and diversity policy, which I think does help address what may happen in a diverse city of ours. And you know what? Diverse doesn't necessarily mean along racial lines or, you know, ethnic lines. Diverse and in this, in this policy, really could mean any group, it just means not having disparity between different, whatever different group, it could be, it could be male, female, it could be sexual preferences, it could be amongst any group, just wanting to know that there isn't discrimination. So this policy, an equity-diversity policy that the Board did pass, is a policy on all other policies, ensuring that within the district, that there isn't any type of disparity. And it's really broad, that it could be about hiring of teachers, it could be having to do with higher-level classes, on which are the demographics in those classes, it could be on anything. I mean, something that recently, after having passed this, after having seen this policy through, and having, and having it on the forefront of my mind, something recently that came to mind is when I went to the MLK Scholarship Dinner, week or two ago, when was that, week or two ago, probably, I don't know, is noticing the students that received the awards, that the students from New London were from the Science and Technology Magnet High School, and in --
And that was true the previous year as well.
That's right. And so that really raised a little flag that said, that said, wait a minute, if our students from those schools, I mean, I mean, it is a magnet school, so it is through lottery, but if those students are receiving the scholarships, it's our responsibility to see why, not to say, so therefore, let's, let's make sure that we have equal number from the other school, but the other high school, but let's look at what are the situations, what are the circumstances that lead to more students reaching a certain, a certain level of education or success in one school versus another? And now, that, you know, that's become part of our responsibility under this policy. It always has been, but this helps us illuminate these areas. So it's something to look at.
And I think recently, there was some action on attendance policies, too, where our district wasn't treating different students inequitably, but New London students were being treated differently from students from surrounding towns. And that's sort of an interesting wrinkle. It isn't exactly what our own equity and diversity policy does, but I think this policy opens us up to thinking about that sort of thing, too, our New London students having a more rigid school experience in general than students in Waterford or Eastline or Montville.
Yes. This attendance policy was completely spearheaded by a group called Hearing Youth Voices, and what they had, they had done a study and shared with community members in certain forums, and shared with the Board. It was a great chart in particular that I, that I remember, that showed the attendance policy, or certain, certain factors of the attendance policy, like the warnings that a student may, would have, and so therefore, the credit loss, the number of days that they could be absent from a class, and then the warnings that they would have. And so the system's in place to leading from, from, from a lack of, or a loss of attendance that leads to lack of credits. And so therefore, within the system, what it told me is, is how much we either help students succeed, or we create obstacles for them, and don't really help them along in order to succeed. And it compared, I think, four communities, it was, you know, ourself, obviously, with Waterford and Groton, and, you know, I could be wrong, but they were neighboring communities. And so it was evident that we needed to make some changes to make sure that it's not our students necessarily who aren't making it, it was our system as well, that wasn't helping them along to succeed. And so, and so, yes, that's something that we recently passed, and part of these issues were dealt with in the policy, and a couple of other of the issues actually were at the, at the school level that needed to be dealt with.
And I'll do, make one small remark, and then we're going to go and have a break, and then when we come back from the break, Rob will join us. But one thing that I think had also not been taken into account, and this is getting away from like, zero tolerance attitudes, is that in New London, a lot of the parents work funny shifts, and so older siblings are often walking their younger siblings to school. And we know the high school day starts early in the morning, and already, so it used to be a very zero tolerance atmosphere, if a student was tardy for any reason, it didn't matter. So I'm thinking that the equity and diversity policy will even continue to help the attendance and tardiness policies.
Oh, that's a good point.
So that families where the parents have to work, you know, be at work at 6:00 A.M., are not negatively impacted.
Sure, sure, sure. So we're talking about income level or home situations.
Right.
And that's a really great example of how the diversity, or the equity and diversity does not just look at race and ethnicity. That's a really good point. I think this is a policy that will be able to be applied to so much, and I like that. Thank you.
Well, we're going to take a three-minute break now, and then, when we come back, we'll talk more about the financial side of this school board.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome back. Myrna and I have been joined by Rob Funk, who is also an incumbent Board of Education member, Democrat, as, well, everyone is except for Myrna. But I wanted, I know that there is a lot of, not just interest in our magnet school system that's emerging, but listening at the mayoral forum and at the council forums, a lot of people are pinning their hopes of, you know, economic development in New London on the success of the magnet schools. So I'm going to ask, how is it going, and how can we make it maybe not be the total economic engine some people hope for, but make it successful?
Well, I mean, we know that having quality schools in a community increases the desirability of living in that community. People want to, actually, I remember when I first moved to New London years ago, some of my neighbors saying, you know, I'm fine with sending my kids to New London elementary schools, but when they get to junior high, we're moving out of town so that we can get into a better school system.
Yeah, that's traditionally been a really bad time for a flight.
Absolutely. And so, you know, I mean, that's one of the focuses on improving our school system, but obviously, the primary focus is on getting the performance of our students up, and the quality of the education that our students receive increased. And the magnet school system is one of the ways that we get more funding into the school system, because the state sees this as a way to add funding without unfairly singling out New London. I guess you could say, New London actually is in a particularly tough spot, because we have so much tax-exempt property, and of course, as you know, we don't get our fair share of payment in lieu of taxes. What is it, close to 50%, I think, of our property is tax-free? And it's one of the ways that the state balances their budget, is by reducing what their, their contribution is to towns in lieu of those.
Yeah, I think by statute, it's much, a much higher percentage than what ever gets funded.
So the formula, basically, for the funding is, you know, obviously, we get the benefit in building our schools, we get a higher reimbursement from the state for building the buildings for the magnet schools. But in the actual funding of the magnet schools' operations, we receive, depending on the level of schools, and I'll talk primarily about elementary schools, because that's primarily what we have, or are working on for magnet schools at the moment, we receive $7,080 from the state, I'm sorry, $7,000, yeah, $7,080 from the state as a tuition reimbursement. We get $3,000 from the town that sends a student. But then, here's where the real incentive is, is our goal is to meet 25% of our enrollment as students that are from out of town. When we achieve that goal, we get an additional $3,000 per New London student in that school.
That's pretty significant.
That works out to be quite, quite a bit of funding. You know, I mean, basically, like, if we had 100 students in a school, 25 of them would be from out of district, then the remaining 75 that are from in district, we get $3,000 per student. That's over and above what our standard funding is that we already receive.
For regular education.
For regular education.
And then, the sending district is required to fund any special ed needs. Yeah, and so, I mean, I would say that that's the precipitous for our decision, and our, meaning the Board prior to us, but, you know, as a school system, for going into being a magnet school district is helping out with the financials of it, because it is a really, it's a big deal. It's actually an issue across the state, the inequity of funding in our districts. I think during the last debate, I spoke of a case, a CGF case. CGF is Double C, Connecticut Coalition for Justice in Education Funding. It's, you know, with urban centers and the great needs that they will have, you know, a greater population that could be English-language learners, or that special, special needs, which really increase your funding needs in a district, you really end up having an inequitable system, where the funding for an education system in some municipalities versus others is, it could, it could be as much as double, you know, or half in our case of what other districts are. And so it is a big factor of why we went into being an all-magnet school district. Obviously, we hope to get much more from that than just the financials, you know?
Well, yeah, it can solve the problem that, you know, Connecticut and New London also, for all the diversity neighborhoods, are quite segregated in our city. And Connecticut has the perfect storm of problematic school funding, because we have, school funding is so dependent on property taxation, and we also have 169 towns and more school districts than that, because there are some unified districts. And so, you know, if we funded schools on a county-wide basis, it probably wouldn't be such an impediment to getting equitable funding, even if it was property. be such an impediment to getting equitable funding, even if it was property tax, because the cities in Connecticut are small enough that the counties have some wealthy surrounding suburbs. But with each town on its own.
Yeah.
It's just a disaster for the poor cities.
Yeah, essentially, that is one of the things that we're accomplishing is regionalizing our school district. So it really does bring in the resources of the entire region, the entire county.
And that aspect of it is really interesting to me because when I was on the board four years ago, I was the liaison to LEARN, and LEARN was at that time just figuring out modest opt-in kind of ways that districts could collaborate to save money, like trying to adopt a universal school calendar that was not required, you know, districts could go with it or not, but to the extent that all the districts decided to agree on a school calendar, you didn't have to have your buses on the road as many days a year. And now that students go to schools all throughout the county practically, even siblings probably go to schools on very different days. Staff development is on different days. They were also talking about insurance consortia and just informal ways, less formal ways, that the whole region could work together. And now with the magnet schools, it seems like some of that's being more formalized.
Yeah.
Now...
Definitely. And just to add to the point that you were making about the segregation in Connecticut, that's actually the state's reason for offering the magnet school, the incentives in our case is that we are quite segregated. Our school community is made up of 85 free and reduced lunched, and so therefore, just the poverty, you know, the concentration of poverty in our school wanting to make sure that we integrate more with other communities.
And I even saw that in the preschool world about 15 years ago when they, I worked for Head Start, and there was a big push to get some students into the program who were middle-class kids because children learn so much vocabulary from each other. And it's something you can't teach as well as help children learn by just interacting with each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Outside of their own little group.
And what, you know, initially identified the challenges that New London has that the state felt that they needed to step in had obviously to do with test performance. Statistically, test performance ties pretty directly to household income.
Yes, it does.
For, you know, a number of reasons, but certainly, one of those biggest reasons, I would think, is that parents that are spending all of their time just trying to make ends meet don't necessarily have, you know, the time or necessarily the mindset to be able to teach their kids from a very early age. And so by putting children from all different economic backgrounds together in a school, you know, the intent certainly is that all children will benefit from that.
I think it also has to do with the resources to just create or to expose children to diverse experiences, to take them on vacations, to have passes to the museum, to, you know, just expose them to the richness that creates the background knowledge in order for them to be able to apply to the vocabulary, to the reading, to everything else, the word problems, you know. Once you have that greater background knowledge, it's more, it's more for you to integrate what all of learning is.
Now, in New London, as you both know, taxpayers think a lot about money, and there was recently a big bonding package for school construction, and I'm guessing it's not the end. One of the consequences of 25% out-of-district students at the same time we're making our schools more desirable for the families who live here is that we'll need more capacity. So what do you see, Rob, as the biggest challenges, but maybe also opportunities with our, you know, our building plans?
Well, first of all, if our enrollment increases by more students that live in New London staying in New London, that's not necessarily more costly. That doesn't necessarily raise our taxes. We can most likely educate our children in district for less expense than educating them out of district. But as far as the implications, yes, I think that the plan that was put together when we built the three elementary schools and even the plan that's being put together now for the, you know, the middle school and the high school, we have to look very, very closely at enrollment projections, and I think we need to update those projections. And I know that that is definitely a focus of the administration right now. It's something that the board has identified as something that should be a focus, and they're doing some very in-depth projections on what enrollment will be. I think it's very likely that the buildings that we have now or have planned now are not going to be sufficient in size to cover our total enrollment because of that factor of students coming in. I mean, we can cap how many students come in from out of district, but we can't nor would we want to cap the number of students that come in from New London.
Right.
So, yeah, we are going to need more space. The good news, though, on that is that the reimbursement rate for construction, while it's all tax dollars from throughout Connecticut, New London, who really kind of gets hurt a little bit on the taxes because of the tax-free or tax-exempt land, gets a really great reimbursement rate. So in our $200 million of bonding that we're doing for building new schools, it's only, was it 38, I think, million? Not that that's a small number, but in comparison to 200 million, that's actually being bonded. The rest is actually a direct reimbursement from the state.
And I recall that when Nathan Hale and Winthrop were redone, the reimbursement rate from the state was 95%, where the prevailing reimbursement for a typical school-building project was, I think, 78%. So it was savings of $11 million for our city. That's a big number. And what we're seeing moving forward is a bigger total.
I'd like to go into a little bit about the student enrollment projections. I had some with me. I left behind, actually. In the School Building and Maintenance Committee, there was a presentation, and we've gotten some information on student enrollment projections, and I believe, might be off a little bit, but by 2024, we may be up an additional 1,200 students about, which our district only has 3,200 students right now, so that's significant. And so, and they're only, and they're only projections, you know, so we can't guarantee that not only will students, I mean, it seems like students are coming from other districts, and that's working out, you know, we've reached what we need, the numbers that we need at Winthrop. We're right on track at Nathan Hale, so we should be by September, have reached the 25%. And so it's working. At the same time, there are over 1,000 students from New London that go to other districts, and we can't predict exactly how many will want to return when this whole district is magnetized. And but these are concerns that we need to, as we're building other buildings, that we need to really keep in mind the space limitations. And there are some real things that, and I don't want to go into it too much, but there's some real things that we could, one of the things, for instance, as we're building, apparently, one of the architects has proposed, which I love the idea, of having new buildings built in a way that, apparently, you can build buildings in a way so that stairways go all the way up to about the roof line, and so does electrical and everything. So if you ever do need to build, you're ready to just cap off.
Go upward.
Yeah, to go upward.
And this is a city, so as we get more people and more density, up seems like it makes sense as a way to go.
Oh, sure. You know, we've already been in situations where, like, where do we, where do we put our increasing number of students? And so therefore, you know, that's a way where we've planned ahead, which I think we really need to consider. Also, if at some point, you know, I'm an advocate for smaller class sizes, if we're able to reach those numbers with funding, with union contracts, you know, all the numerous ways, that means we might need more classes, more space for a similar number of students that we have. And so there's many reasons for us to be prepared, to be able to move into something larger if we need to.
And I think frankly, pretty much all the board members were shocked to find out about a year ago that if we wanted to reduce class size based on the architectural plans that we were looking at a year ago, we couldn't do it.
Exactly.
With the projected number of students that we have, it's not even an issue of whether or not we can afford enough teachers to reduce that class size. I mean, that is an issue, but we couldn't even get that far because we just don't have enough space to do that.
Sure. And so what I'm saying is I don't want to close off those possibilities.
Right, absolutely.
So with that in mind, what's planned for Harbor?
Harbor right now, it's a tough one. So right now, we just have the early ECC, the Early Childhood Center there right now. So is it to K or to first grade?
It's to first grade.
Through first grade. Oh, yeah, they just expanded that this year. And so the conversation, there are some, you know, architectural plans that, you know, just recently, today, I saw them again, with construction plans there. And the idea right now, and it's really just at a planning phase, so, you know, none of this has been approved, but is keeping the original building, looking to perhaps demolish the newer piece, I guess, such as the gym.
Yes, the gym.
And creating behind, so on the, behind the original building on the water side, creating a preschool area down there.
So it's a good thing that that building didn't get turned into condos.
It's a good thing.
As some people had hoped.
Which is, yeah, just speaks to the point of needing space and being able to, and ensuring that we're planning for that because it could make it that much more expensive if we have to work on space that's, you know, just out of the blue that we haven't planned for.
Now, I want to talk about, like, the Board of Ed as a board and what its role is. You know, I have a ballot here, and people are going to be thinking about which candidates to vote for. When I was on the Board of Ed, I think of the seven, like, five of us were teachers. And I've come to the conclusion that that probably is not the best way to configure a board. So I'm thinking, and it's, anyway, it's an interesting coincidence, by the way, that Rob and Myrna are in the same column on this ballot, but...
Oh, I didn't notice that.
Yes. Rob and then Myrna twice, actually, on the ballot. But when people vote, how can they take into consideration the different skills that people can bring to the board as members? Where can they get the information, and what kind of skills do you think people should be looking at?
I mean, I certainly think that a diverse set of skills is so important. I am not somebody who has a background in education. I have an education, but I haven't studied education, but I have a background in business. I have a background in finance. I have, you know, some basic understanding of how to read a legal document or a contract or an MOU, and I think that those are skills that are really important to bring to the board. Those skills alone are definitely not adequate to, you know, for a board, meaning, not that it's not adequate for me to bring those skills, but it really is a group effort. I think that members of the board are willing to listen to my expertise about finance as I'm willing to listen to their expertise about educational issues and about curriculum and about program and, you know, all those many aspects.
I think I, I don't want to miss speak. I think I am the only K through 12 educator on the board. We have some, a couple of higher ed educators, but I am a certified bilingual teacher. I've taught from K to eighth grade. But skills, you know, run, and I think that's important, you know, I think I have a pretty good background on not just the classroom experience, but education justice issues, you know, understanding what is going on in the world of education and reform. But I think obviously, it goes beyond the skills, the professional skills, you know, I think it goes beyond, I mean, what would you say are those qualities? I mean, obviously, someone who's diligent and attentive to the documents that we receive. I think, you know, you brought up a good point about, I don't think you said it directly, but being open-minded, not just for people to hear your areas of expertise, but being able to hear other areas.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's so much just deferring to somebody else's skills, but recognizing that they have something that they can teach you, and then you can use your common sense.
Sure.
To understand that, you know, that issue better and to make your own decision on it.
No, I completely agree.
Yeah, I think from my experience, there was not any business person on the board when I was on. There wasn't a lawyer. But I felt as though because there was no one on the board who was an elected representative who really understood the financial side, we were overly dependent on what the administration told us in that area, and we didn't provide any kind of checks and balances on it, not in a really informed way. So, you know, if we think about what the function of a Board of Education is and its relationship with administration, what else besides diligence and finance and knowledge of teaching?
Yeah, I think we could come up with some other areas, but I do want to underscore because I think that's a really important point. I don't have a background in business. I don't have a background in finance. And I think I definitely look to you for, you know, look, you know, ask you questions in those areas. At the same time, I wouldn't say that I do defer. I think I, like, pose my own questions to my own.
Right, to my own.
So that's a really good point, you know, that, yes, you do want to acknowledge people's areas and glean information, but you also need people to have their own, like, think them through and develop their own positioning according to, you know, your own background, your common sense that you have. So that's a good point.
And I do think it's good to get that both from fellow board members and also from the administration.
Oh, absolutely.
But not just from one source.
Oh, of course, of course.
Because there are different roles. Well, we're down to five minutes, and I wanted to let people know how they can learn more about you two and also the other Board of Ed candidates. So there is a forum tomorrow night at the Senior Center. It's sponsored by the taxpayer group, LOTS. And the last, the one they sponsored for the council was pretty good. You got to hear all of the candidates. There was a forum last week that was sponsored by the League of Women Voters, the Neighborhood Alliance, and several other organizations, and I thought that was quite good. I don't, I think people can still watch it on Channel 22, but I'm not exactly sure how. But maybe each of you can tell folks how they can find out about you specifically.
I mean, I don't have a website, and my Facebook page is not very well organized. I believe that the day has a voter guide.
They do.
And there are just three simple questions, and I don't think that my answers have been posted on there yet because I just submitted them last night. But certainly, you know, contact me through Facebook or contact me at robfunknlboe@gmail. Try that one more time. Robfunknlboe@gmail, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And coming to meetings, I realize there's only a week to go. Well, there's actually, there's a Finance and Audit Committee meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
So if you want to find out about that and 8:00 AM...
That's a great opportunity because actually, we'll be discussing what we expect our revenues and our costs are going to be for next year, and it's sort of the design phase of the budget for next year. So it's kind of looking a little bit at priorities, and it's a great opportunity to learn more about the finances of the schools. Finances of schools are more than just how much money that we spend. It's a way of really understanding whether we're effective and whether we're putting our energy in the right places, you know? And it's a great way also to see if, you know, we're accomplishing what we're setting out to.
And where are those meetings held?
The meeting tomorrow morning is at Conference Room A at Central Office, which I think that's the same floor that you actually enter in on.
Yes.
If you go right, it's all the way down the end, and that, of course, is a public meeting. And then I think actually the next public meeting, well, there's, isn't there a design meeting on Friday?
No, that happened today.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was today. So then I don't think there's another public meeting until after the election. But certainly encourage everybody to come to board meetings.